Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 23. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Claus?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Cassidy?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here. Thank you. Would you all please rise and join me in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Keep saying that pledge aloud, kids. We love it.
They sound great.
All right. Next on our agenda is announcements. Do any board members have announcements? Mr. Wilson?
This week, 15 Peoria Public Schools are observing Start With Hello Week. Part of Stop The Violence Through Student Voice, a multifaceted three-year program from Sandy Hook Promise designed to build a positive culture and climate within schools to address bullying, violence, and suicide. Start With Hello School activities this week were developed and implemented by student-led Promise Clubs at each school. Today, many schools gave students name tags and encouraged them to greet peers that they don't know by name. Schools are hosting No One Eats Alone Days at lunchtime and activities to get to know their classmates better. Parents and guardians of primary school children, help your child read for 20 minutes every day and make sure to complete their reading log to record their students' progress.
Thank you. The announcements, Mrs. Cassidy.
Wednesday, September 25th is School Improvement Day and a half-day for students. That's Wednesday, September 23rd.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez?
The Re-Pioria Book Drive kicks off on Thursday, October 3rd at Richwoods Peoria High School Book Market at 7:00 p.m. at Peoria State. Please bring new and generally used books to Regional Office of Education. Each person bringing a book will receive a coupon for $1 at the concession stand and a bracelet. The public also is invited to join the book drive by bringing books to the book rack in Oak Cliff Center or any Peoria Public School with a little free library. All children and youth books are welcome, picture books, chapter books, fiction or nonfiction. Align Peoria, the book rack and the Peoria County Regional Office of Education want to stock each little free library for the rest of the school year. Monetary donations can also be sent to the Peoria Public Schools Foundation. For details, go to www.poriapublicschools.org.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mrs. Ross?
Deadline for Peoria Public Schools Foundation Classroom Grants. Tuesday, October 1st is the application deadline for Peoria Public Schools Foundation Classroom and Field Experience Grants. Peoria Public School teachers, tell us about your creative, rigorous, and innovative project ideas to win a Peoria Public Schools Foundation Classroom Grant for up to $1,000. Apply today.
Thank you. Mr. Claus?
I have the informational meeting. The Richwoods High School International Back Laureate Program informational meeting for parents will be held Wednesday, October 2nd at 6:00 p.m. in the school auditorium.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
Yep.
Here.
FAFSA applications are available on October 1st. Parents of seniors are encouraged to submit their FAFSA application as early as possible. Illinois MAP grants are awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. Parents, if you have any questions about FAFSA, please check your school website or contact your student's guidance counselor. My second report, very dear to my heart. Student Voter Registration Day, this Tuesday, September 24th, tomorrow, is National Voter Registration Day, and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority is partnering with local organizations to bring voter registration education to all Peoria High Schools. Students interested in registering must be 18 years old or will be 18-year-old by November 3rd, 2020. All students will need to have two forms of identification. Please go to www.poriaelections.org for types of acceptable identification and get registered to vote. And just as a footnote, Mr. Wilson and I on the Policy Committee are looking at things that we can do to encourage voting here, so it would help a lot if high school students could get out and register votes. It's very important.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Parent University. Remember to RSVP for the Books and Barbecue Parent University Event on Thursday, October 3rd. The event will feature great family activities at Peoria Public Library, Lakeview Branch, and the Noble Center. A delicious free barbecue dinner, book giveaways, and much more. Transportation will be provided from Harrison, Roosevelt, Peoria High School, Lincoln K8, and Glen Oak. Please go to peoriapublicschools.org/parentuniversity for more information and to RSVP. Second announcement is Manuel Jr. added to the Student Advisory Council. Last week, it was announced that Manuel Jr., Amir Sykes, was named to the Illinois State Board of Education's 2019-2020 Student Advisory Council. Amir is one of just 21 students throughout the entire state to join this prestigious group and the only one from the area. Last year, the Student Advisory Council provided input on topics such as equity, mental health, competency-based education, college and career readiness, special education, and technology in the classroom.
Thank you. Finally, the district youth basketball experience begins this week for third and fourth grade students. Each session this week will go from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the high school gyms across the city. For Franklin, Lincoln, and Glen Oak students, the session is tonight at the Woodruff Gym. For Charter Oak, Hines, Keller, and Northmore students, the session will be Tuesday, September 24th, at the Richwoods Gym. For Dr. Maude Sanders, Thomas Jefferson, and Whittier students, the session will be Wednesday, September 25th, at the Peoria High Gym. And for Harrison, Roosevelt, and Treewind students, the session will be Thursday, September 26th, at the Manuel Gym. Volunteer coaches and sponsors are still needed. We learned our own Mr. Wilson here as a coach this year, so please be generous with your time and donations, and please call 309-696-2358 for more information. All right. I'm going to move things around a little bit and do the Remarkable Spirit Award. Can I call Dr. Gersnitch to the podium to introduce our winner for this week?
Good evening and thank you, President Adler, Board, and Dr. Karat. I'm very proud to be able to present to you tonight an award to a gentleman who's gone above and beyond for us with our new D-Squared program. So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Lucas. He was behind me. There he is. There he is. Mr. Lucas is a counselor at Peoria High School, and he's been an integral part of the D-Squared program. He helped do the curriculum alignment, and he has -- so he's been working on this for the past year and a half with us, and representing well the curriculum piece as well as the expectations. And so each week, he goes to ICC. I'm there about every other week, but he's kind of like the major check-in person to see how the students are doing, collecting information if there's something I need to take to ICC. Otherwise, he troubleshoots with the counselors at the home high schools as well. So, I just wanted to recognize him for his leadership and the fact that he saw the vision of D-Squared very early on and really took hold of it. So, congratulations, Mr. Lucas. Want to say anything?
I just want to thank Dr. Gersnitch for all her support and guidance in this program. You know, we always hear about, you know, thinking outside the box for learning for our students, and this is just one of those many opportunities that we have for students in our district. I really look forward to continuing my work with these 20 young adults and watching them grow and mature over these next couple of years. Thank you again.
At this time, we'll move on to some employee recognition. Call forward several people representing APSCO, including Mr. Elliott from Richwoods High School, Parker Gross, Greg Gilson, and Mr. Kazan.
So, I've been asked to talk for two minutes. It won't take long. We're APSCO. We are your experiential learning curriculum. We have two classes at Richwoods, two classes at Manuel, and we had our first fundraiser last week. If you turn to our fourth page, Unity Point was our presenting sponsor, and then Maui Gym and OSF Healthcare on the second level. So, we had four awards. If you flip to the page after that, we honored our annual student leader. Last year, it was Ms. Mariah Cooley. This year, it was Ms. Cassidy Coleman. Both outstanding students. And we also honored three individuals. We had the Unity Point Award that went to Brett Elliott. We founded our program at Richwoods. We would never be here without Brett's energy and guidance and push for this type of learning at Richwoods. He encouraged us on the loudspeaker at assemblies, really cared for our growth. I see him all the time. He's amazing. He's impossible to find at his desk. He knows every student. He's everywhere, and every nook of the school, he knows it all. So, it's because of his win that we sail. So, Brett was honored for the Maui Gym Annual Community Insight Award for his impact that he has in the community through our school district. So, that was Brett. And we'll stay on the Richwoods track. Parker Gross, he's our teacher at Richwoods. He has an education and psychology background, so he has a different approach to business learning than, say, Greg, who has a STEM background. But Parker's very methodical, patient, caring, and really is able to deliver learning to these kids, so when they get to us in the after-school program, they're ready to work for our clients. And he's done an incredible job of that, so he was awarded a recognition for the impact that he's had at Richwoods and our students, and he's amazing, so. Then Dr. Gilson at Manuel. We have two classes at Richwoods, two at Manuel, STEM background. Both of these guys have a long list of laureates, which I won't read, but Greg's been amazing because Manuel's been a little different than Richwoods as far as reaching our student and having them trust in our curriculum and the philosophy of what we teach. And Greg has had a lot of experience in that, and he's been fundamental in us having success in our first year at Manuel this year, and then this winter, growing to the after-school program and getting Manuel its first client. So, we're extremely grateful. Thank you so much, Greg. And the last part of the fundraiser was to raise money to expand to two classes at Peoria High next year, which we did raise that money, so I'm totally psyched about that. Thank you very much. It's always an honor to be here and talk to you guys.
At this time, I think we will move on to district presentations. All right. We did want to recognize the Remains this evening, but I know they had another engagement, so we'll try and recognize them when they're able to arrive. So, first up, I see Dr. Gersnitch to talk about ISPE Learning and Snow Days. And I also wanted to remind the audience, we do have a budget hearing tonight, and so wherever we're at at 7:00, we will stop and go right to that.
Good evening again. So, the Illinois State Board of Education has -- is allowing districts to apply for waivers for snow days again this year. They have put together a list of parameters, however, and so we have several steps that we will go through in order to request the waiver. Some of those steps are, first of all, we can only go up to five snow days because that's what we have built into our calendar. Union leadership and involvement is a crucial part of the process, and I've now met with five out of six of the unions and gotten very positive feedback on that. And Thomas, for instance, did a survey last year, and we had, what, 97% positive comments on the survey about how we ran the snow days last year. So, in terms of Dr. Wilson and her team, they're going to work on the teacher and the student side of the world, and then I'm going to handle the other unions and work with them on creating very good plans for what their staff will do on those snow days. So, I did give the Board a packet through Dr. Karat the other day, and the word "draft" is at the top of this. So, the state is still deliberating on what to do with special education students on the snow days because they might not have the same access to learning as other students. So, we're waiting to hear what their feedback is, what their information is regarding that. What we will be doing is having a lot of our students be able to do e-learning through devices that they have at home. If they cannot do electronic devices, Dr. Wilson is putting together a plan for at parent conferences that parents can say they want a packet of activities for the students to do instead of doing something through online access. And the state does not require a certain percent of students to be online as long as what the students are doing is balanced and equivalent to the other group of students. So, I provided kind of a work chart. We need to post for a public hearing, and I'd like to do that with the Board's permission in two days. We have to have that public hearing posted for 10 days, and then after that, I would ask to be able to come back and do a Board resolution that we continue to seek the waiver. So, we're pretty excited about trying to do this.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gersnitch. Any board questions on the e-learning or snow day plans? Mr. Walter?
From what you said, it sounded very positive from last year.
It was.
The kids who did not have computers at home, and you had to do that, what was the percentage of people that completed that? I know there was a certain percentage, maybe Dr. Wilson knows, but the students had to...
They had up to a week to complete their packets, so they really -- it would have been pretty high. Dr. Wilson, I don't have your actual number on that, but...
Do you know what the number was of those that completed? I was just curious about the packets.
I think it was high because if not, then they would not have gotten that attendance credit.
Right.
The attendance credit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. It's locked in suspense.
Yes.
So, if there are no more questions, then we'll thank Dr. Gersnitch and call Dr. Bell up to talk about the cellphone policy.
Well, actually, the Remains just arrived.
The Remains are here?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right.
All right. As they make their way in...
Thank you for coming.
They're busy people. They're busy people, so. I want to thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to present the Community Spirit Award to two people who have had a huge impact on the community in a very short period of time. About a year and a half ago, I met Nikki in Dr. Karat's office and instantly was excited about their endeavor, being an art lover myself. And so, I was thrilled to death to hear how their art program could build on and enhance what our art programs are already doing in our buildings. So, as you may know, they opened the Art Inc. Center this past spring, and they've spent countless hours working with volunteers and teams of people to just renovate Greeley into something beautiful again. During that time, Nikki also worked closely with me on the 21st Century Grant, and she provided a lot of opportunities for artists to come and work with our students through that program. So, what was really cool about that was students got to see people doing their career while they were teaching them, so they got to see, you know, what does an artist really do and earn a living, so they got to learn about that. I do want to point out, we have three pieces of artwork hanging behind me. These are examples of what was done at Art Inc. this summer with our students. They're really beautiful. And in just a minute, I'm going to ask the Remains to come up and talk just a little bit about those beautiful works of art that we're going to selfishly keep here in the boardroom for a while. So, at this time, would you please join me in honoring Nikki and Jonathan with the Community Spirit Award? And again, I'd like to present this to them for their passion and conveying that passion to our students, and then also to talk about their works of art.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you guys so much for taking the time out to honor us. And, you know, we always feel a little guilty about being honored for something that we really love to do. It just doesn't even seem fair. We're sold for this community, and, you know, just like everybody in this room, we just want what's best for our kids, and we just decided we would roll up our sleeves and do what we could with what we have. The pieces on the wall that you guys see in the back, these three pieces, we were so excited to work with the kids to do them, and the project was, we brought all the kids together, and we talked about issues that they were concerned about in their community. And we let the kids lead the conversation, and they came up with a list of about 20 or 30 issues that they thought were pertinent to their lives. And so, we narrowed it down to the three that you all have here, which was stopping the dropout rate, saying no to drugs, and violence. And the kids actually led the discussion, and, you know, they created these pieces with cutouts from the catalogs that we had in the room, and we just kind of like nudged them a little bit, but it was their creation from the beginning to the end, and we were so proud and honored to be a part of that, and we just look forward to working with you guys as much and as often as you would like to work with us.
I just want to say thank you. We're so glad to be here. We were actually running late because I had an orientation with the teachers for the 21st Century Program. I had to move that around, so we're just juggling a lot, and we're just so glad to be working with you all, and we look forward to this year with the 21st Century Program.
And one last thing, if I might. We will be having our first fundraiser at Greeley on October 26th.
It's Dia de los Muertos, Love Never Dies, and it's going to be an annual fundraiser. We will celebrate the life of a Peorian that has passed away, but that has contributed greatly to Peoria, and this year, it will be Glenn Barton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bell, can you get it in under five minutes?
I will.
Excellent.
All right. Good evening, President Adler, Vice President Shaw, board members, Dr. Karat. Wanted to, on behalf of my committee members, give you a quick, very quick update. See, we're approaching 7:00. About the cellphone pouches. Sending from your affirmative vote on June 23rd, you directed the administration to implement the usage of pouches for cellphones for those students who chronically violate the policy. We've done that. Met last week with the Policy Committee, and Policy Committee received the recommendations of the committee, and I believe that you guys are going to take a vote on that this evening as well. But in a nutshell, for the audience members who are not privy to the June 23rd board meeting, we have an opportunity to continue piloting in all of our middle schools and high schools, a tool that building administrators can use for those students who, you know, continuously violate the policy by placing their cellphones in pouches. However, instead of turning those pouches in, the students will keep the pouches on their persons for the remainder of the day. And at the end of the school day, there is a locking and unlocking mechanism in which the student can go by, and it's a magnet, and it opens the pouch, and the students can retrieve, you know, his or her cellphone and go on about their business at the end of the day. Next week, October 1st, that's when we're thinking about actually rolling it out to the schools, implementing, and like I said, it's going to be in all of the middle schools and high schools. And unless there are additional questions, I stand ready to receive questions. While you're generating questions, I also want to recognize Coach Booth and Ms. Hassan for their work on the committee as well, for helping us get to this point of implementation of the policy of the cellphone pouches.
Questions from board members on the cellphone policy. Mr. Walter?
It's not really a question. It was maybe a procedural question. For this to be started on October 1st, the implementation this week, do we have to do this as a second reading? I'm just asking, it's part of the military thing.
Yeah, I think we would have to waive our current policy requirement of two readings, but we've done that in the past. We can do that tonight.
Okay. As part of the Policy Committee, I think Mr. Wilson and I agreed that if we had to do that, we would do that to implement this. We think this plan's very well thought out, and we like it.
Thank you, sir.
I would just ask, which I may have missed it, Mr. Wilson and I, we wanted to update the current policy, but also, well, I was kind of waiting for the administrative procedures that went along with the policy. So, I think that that has to be part of this whole process before we can roll it out.
Okay.
The administrative procedures that will be actions at each school today.
Okay. Yeah. Yep, Mr. Wilson.
Do you have the books?
No. I was just going to say that, yes, we can definitely, if not tomorrow, definitely by Wednesday, do what we need to do to expedite in terms of getting the administrative policy in place for your approval or review.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
We talked about the procedures going along with each policy and how it's going to work for everyone so that it's not all over the place, you know, different ones.
Okay.
I don't know if we submitted that or not, but we talked about...
I was thinking, Dr. Bell, I thought we were, it was going to be up to the administration to dictate how, yeah, to develop how they wanted to use.
Yeah. Yeah, Dr. Karat. Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, in terms of making sure that one size doesn't fit all because of the various buildings and the circumstances therein, we were thinking, you know, it would probably be best if each individual school at their ULT formulated their specific, you know, implementation in terms of how they're going to utilize the pouches, but...
Yep. So, the word, I think the key word is chronic abuse, right? Chronic abuser, because this is what we received from the committee, your committee, and we continued with that terminology so that, as Dr. Bell said, then schools would be able to define what that actually means. We did not want to get into weeds, as far as that's concerned, regarding administrative procedures. But for the most part, we have it. They're very simple and consistent with what we've done in the past regarding even uniform violations.
Correct.
So, this is a good discussion. It is, however, 7:01, so I'd like us to divert to the budget hearing. We can bring Dr. Bell back up afterwards if we want to discuss further. But at this time, I would like to open up the budget hearing for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Any member of the public here tonight who'd like to come forward and speak in terms of this year's budget, simply come to the podium and state your name.
Yes, Terry Knapp. I've talked about these points before at budget hearings, and I think it's important for me to reiterate. This year, the state government and our grand governor decided, when he got elected, and I want everybody, especially the kids, to listen to this, he increased 19 taxes statewide. He increased the gas tax, for example, 19 cents. Obviously, that costs the taxpayers in Peoria significant amounts of money. They continue to do this in the city. They raise our... They raise our taxes every time they turn around and it's becoming an unbearable place to live. We are giving administrators pay raises tonight, it's my understanding. We are giving, already gave the superintendent pay raises. We're going to surely give our teachers commensurate pay raises. I raise this so that people behind me from Quest especially can know what a contract looks like, because they don't have a contract. They have a two-page contract. This is a 60-page contract. There was 78 pages and we reduced the number of pages because of the font size. But it's still, if you look at this, you'll find that it's an effort by the Board of Education. Every page in here, every clause in here and the pay scales have been approved by previous Boards of Education who have been elected by the city of Peoria. We know your addresses and you've been elected. On the other hand, I can't even get the addresses of the Quest Board members because they don't have to give them. They don't have to give anything. Matter of fact, this board is considering giving your school $30 million that your board doesn't even have to account for to this board. I don't understand that concept. I'm not against charter schools, but I don't understand the concept. Busing is another thing. When we closed Woodruff High School, 900 kids, high school kids, got put on the bus. They all walked to school, basically. For 10 years, they've been on buses going to Central, Manuel and Richwoods. Outrageous. These kids on East Bluff and the North Side, you know, have been involved in killings, shootings, violence, because partly 60% of all the violence in Peoria or all the discipline problems with students in Peoria occur on buses. The bullying, everything that goes with it occur on buses. We have, again, the lawyers. Every time I bring this up, our lawyers are from the suburbs of Chicago. We have law firms in Peoria, they get about a million dollars a year, give or take, and that money should be recycled in Peoria. We should not have a law firm in the suburbs of Chicago. We've had that now for I don't know how long. I bring it up every year and I don't understand the theory by the Board of Education or the administration that we have these lawyers come down, take a million dollars a year back to the suburbs and spend it in Chicago. That money should be spent here in Peoria. That would reduce our taxes if we had lawyers spending the million dollars and recycling it in Peoria. Don't understand that concept. Right now, the UAW, and this has to do with unions, you're going to be bargaining with the unions. The UAW, which I'm sure all you kids know what the UAW is for sure, is a union. You don't have a union. You weren't allowed to have a union the first five years. In the second five years, you were not allowed to join the Peoria Union. It's crazy. How can your teachers put up with it? I don't understand why they don't put up with it. They leave town. 45 or 55% turnover in your teachers. That's where they go. They're not going to work without a contract. Are you kidding me? Nobody works without a contract. Illinois is one of the most unionized states in the United States. We have 90,000 teachers in the IFT and 120,000 in the IEA in Illinois. We have 2.1 million in the AFT nationally and 3.2 million in the IEA, excuse me, the National IEA Organization in Washington, DC. 5.3 million teachers are unionized. Learn what unions do, watch the UAW. It's going to be interesting. Hopefully, they won't bankrupt the company like they did down in Canton with the farm implement company down there. Again, it's important, I think, that you understand that all of this affects the budget in Peoria, Illinois. Please do not give $30 million to a bunch of people, board members that have been handpicked, that don't live in Peoria and don't, once they get to 30 million, you won't see these people here. I haven't seen them for eight years. It's crazy.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, President of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. I am curious if maybe someone could speak to the placeholder percentage you intend to put in for teacher raises for the upcoming budget and also comment on how that has been planned for in the current budget. With regards to Quest, I was hoping you could comment on its impact on the District 150 budget. I think it's, you know, it's rather clear. Where are we with it and where would we be without it financially? And the last item, budgetarily, travel. I continue to see on your Friday packet for central administrators, travel all across the country. You know, and then I still go back to our IB teachers who, you know, with, for one of our outstanding programs, all they asked for was some in-person IB training and they were denied that based upon the cost. Yet again, we have people flying all across the country at the central administrative level. And yes, thank God for our contract. If anyone from Quest would like to see it or have a copy, I have plenty at the office. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak on the 2019-2020 budget? Last call, seeing none. I now declare this budget hearing to be closed. All right. Does the board want to continue to discuss the cellphone policy?
Like to finish it.
Yeah. Who would like to speak?
I just want to get clarification. Just want to make sure that we're clear, because we spent a year working on looking at this and you were part of that and where Shannon, she was part of that too. So not that we are looking for a cookie cutter, but what I know happens is that if you don't have some guidelines for people to work with them, then it's all over the place because, you know, schools on the South Side of Peoria would get harsher punishment than schools on the North Side. And this is history and it's, you know, it's already been proven. If you don't have a guide to go by, and what we, we talked back and forth, Mr. Wilson, you were a part of that, about having, you know, really letting them decide, like if you broke the policy off and out of sight, your cellphone off and out of sight for, maybe the first time would be a warning, maybe the second time, you would have to put it in the bag for a day. And then if it's the third or fourth time, but I could see how that could be kind of misconstrued in some places and because it happens already where people are allowed to. We have a policy, a cellphone policy, but kids are allowed, in some classrooms, okay, you can listen to music and others are allowed, well, you can get, open it in the hallway, listen to it in the hallway. So all the statistics show that it's been a problem in the schools, in all of the schools.
So what we can do, I think, to not exhaust this conversation here is, and some people use it successfully for instruction, which is amazing, but you can reconvene your committee and then maybe engage the two committee individuals from this board and sort of see if there's an agreement on quantifying or defining the term that we were given, chronic violators. Okay. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right.
We'll do.
So which means then it could postpone the implementation of October 1. Are we good with that?
I mean, I'm, what do you think, Mr. Wilson? I'm not trying to postpone it, but what I'm saying is there's got to be some guidelines.
I definitely think you make a good point. I do believe when we came up with the, with the idea with the, with the rest of the committee members, we originally came up with some type of guidelines behind, behind, you know, taking the cellphones or putting them in a pouch in the first place. So, yeah, if we have to prolong it, you know, for now to get this thing right, then that's what we need to do because, you know, this is very important, I think, to the district beneficial, so.
Sounds good.
Okay. Just from a timeline perspective, our next board meeting is, scheduled board meeting is October 14th. And then a couple, two days after that is fall break. So just for people's clarity, we look and then to, we would target implementation then after fall break.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Who's on the committee?
To my, the internal administrative committee. Myself, Ms. Michelle Hassan, the executive director over the high schools, Coach Booth, who's our SEL director. We also had Dr. Ikijaku, our associate superintendent for human resources on the committee, and we had principals as well.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Principals from different areas? Principals?
Yes, ma'am. We had the principal at Sterling, Roland Akers and Peoria High, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Kostic.
I understand that, I mean, it's already been formed and everything and decisions have been put on the table. However, I think that with this committee, probably in my estimation, might have wanted to have student input to try to see why students are having the phone. You know, I just think it's important that the students have a voice in policy changes and everything so that we can hear it from their perspective. It may be too late, but just something to keep in mind for the future.
All right.
Well, it started with that committee because that committee gave us, gave me the directive to implement this idea. So it was actually out of students' hands by then. So unless there were student members on your committee.
Yeah, we weren't any student members on the committee, but I think individuals would talk to students about it. I don't know if some of the other members were, because, I mean, if they talked to them, but I talked to a lot of students about it, cellphones.
So by the time, Mrs. Kostic, you came on board, we were given the, basically the directive to go ahead and implement this.
Yeah.
So that's what this is all about.
I also want to say that, Ms. Ross, I definitely agree with you. I get a little uneasy when we start talking about individual schools setting their own policies. What's going to be done needs to be done across the board. So if we need to define what is chronic, then it starts from one school and goes to every other school. So I get a little uneasy when we're talking about every school. It goes back to the thing with the dress code when the individual schools, even though there was a policy defined what they felt was improper dress. It's all, it's all in the eyes of the beholder. So the same thing goes for the cellphones. It's all in the eyes of the beholder. So it's just important to be clear and concise as to, as you're indicating what a chronic abuser is and how do you determine when you're implementing this program on the first or thereafter, what determines who's a chronic at that particular time? So I'm just asking.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Ike, one of the things we did not want to do is, you know, we wanted to focus on using overtime wisely and I would like my administrators to spend their time more on instruction and instructional leadership and improving teaching and engagement rather than being a cellphone police. Because this, this thing could be a monster. And so, you know, thus the idea of elasticity around, because when I was a principal at Manuel and other places, high school, we were given, you're right, the uniform policy and it did talk about chronic violators and it was up to us to determine. And even cellphones were in there somewhere. So we had, we had the flexibility to, we had flexibility, which, which I thought was really good. But Dr. Ike, you worked on the policy with the team. Any feedback?
Yes. Just an observation that right now, it's been working pretty good over at Glen Oak. And in fact, the fact that it's been working well is noteworthy, but that in June, the board through the parent teacher committee directed the administration to also expand it to other schools. So therefore, the logistics, the mechanism, all working very well. We have models out there to use. Secondly, there really is no cellphone policy, so to speak. This is actually policy number 7190 called Student Behavior. Cellphone happens to be a couple of pages down where it says if somebody misbehaves in any certain way, disobeys behavior norms, this is one of the things, this is how you can handle it. So that right now, even without this recommendation, principals can seize a cellphone or require them to set it aside at the entrance or whatever. This is just, as Dr. Bell said, one more tool so that when they get it, they put it in that pouch and say, here, you can walk around with it all day. At the end of the day, we unlock it and you're off. So it's really not a separate cellphone policy. We're just amending the existing student behavior policy and inserting a couple of words and deleting one, there's a sentence there that talks about pagers. Pagers are old. Nobody uses pagers anymore. So the committee says, delete that line and add a couple of lines that says that when they come in, if they're disruptive, they come in, they put it in there and when they're leaving, you unlock it and they're done. So I don't want to give the impression that it's a wholesale overhaul of existing policy or that it's a brand new policy that we're promulgating. We're not, it's not. It's an existing policy that's being tweaked to add that feature to make it work.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ike. So what I would recommend is, again, that the committee, let's just have a conversation about, and you'll bring in your principals also, about the possibility of attempting to quantify and at what range. Because you're right, Glen Oak, it was piloted at Glen Oak and again, it was under those same sort of guidelines where they had, you know, they had the authority and the freedom to sort of in-house make that determination.
And just wanted to say one thing. I know we didn't come up with this, the committee. We came up with it so, and we understood that it's going to be a tool for the administrators to use. We wanted to support the administrators behind how they actually implemented it. You know, one of the things that as a committee we discussed is the current cellphone policy and how we felt it wasn't enforced. So we thought of the pouches from there. We're not, we don't want these pouches to be purchased and then they're not used. And I think that's why Ms. Ross brought up the point she made as far as having a policy or having some type of steps to utilize these pouches in place. If we're not going to enforce these pouches, I don't want to support getting these pouches. I just want to put that out there. You know, we're getting them for a reason, for them to be enforced.
And it's a national trend. And again, Glen Oak was our model. They came and spoke to us. Every seventh and eighth grade student at Glen Oak put their phones in a pouch for the day. I mean, I'm not here to go against student cellphones. Teachers and administrators said one of the major problems they have for providing instruction was the cellphones disruption, cellphone disruptions. So that's why we addressed it. As, as this committee has, as a statute at the state level says that we have to have this committee, we have addressed, we were the ones that came up with, you know, again, uniforms and several other parent university, all to try to decrease the discipline policies at the district. So we've come up with a lot of different things and this was one of the ones we worked on. on.
Yep.
Very diverse committee as well. So it wasn't like, you know, just me, Ms. Ross, you know, there's women in the audience here. That was part of that. Teaching room, both, both over there, so.
Yeah.
There.
There.
So good conversation. Now, the idea is, the plan was based on the second committees. There's, there was the board committee and then it turned it over to the administration committee, which pulled in principals also. So based on, on what, what was planned to do after this meeting was to distribute pouches, X number of pouches to the various schools and say, okay, hey, you have this at your disposal, you know, based on, you know, for your, for your chronic violators sort of thing. But yep, so they, they would have been getting their pouches tomorrow. But at some point, though, as we're having this discussion, we are going to have to figure out how to incorporate these devices, especially as we're talking about reimagining. But that's for a different time, a different conversation. Yeah. It can't be, it can't be stifled and locked up for a long, 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 long time because that's, you know, this world is moving in a different direction, but it's a different generation. I get it. But for the time being, the committee will, will get together and sort of try to quantify this, this terminology. And then we'll, we'll play around with it. We'll have some fun with it and then bring it back. How's that?
Locked up, we're all going.
No, if they want, if they want to use them in the classroom, it should be universal. And those kids that don't have them, then we have to provide some, some access to technology. I think they should use them in the classroom, but as we visit schools and classrooms and 20 kids are on their phones doing different stuff and the teacher is trying to teach, it's disruptive. That's what I think, but anyway.
Okay. So we'll, we'll hear a report back from, from your team, Dr. Karat, and we'll readdress.
Thank you, Dr. Bell.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have presentations by audience. We do have rules for presenting to the board. They can find them via our public comment box or also on our website. We just ask that you come forward and, and be respectful of our time and the other speakers by keeping your presentation to five minutes. And if you do offer criticism for us, we ask that it be constructive so that we can continue to grow and improve. So our first speaker tonight is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
I think I applaud the manner in which the cellphone policy was discussed and decided. Now I ask that you do what I don't think has ever been done before. Please keep extremely accurate records of both the successes and failures of the policy so that if any changes are needed, the same committee can make thoughtful revisions. Of course, input from all teachers as to the success of the policy should be considered. A similar committee should be formed as soon as possible to discuss revisions to all discipline policies to include the kinds of consequences to be meted out for the various types of offenses. All voices should be heard and ideas should be put in writing for consideration by the committee. I do have some general suggestions relating to improving the discipline in our schools. First, students should be convinced that school administrators and support staff as well as central administrators support the teachers. Students must understand that teachers control, control their classrooms, period. If administrators have a problem with a particular teacher, that's between the teacher and the administrator. If a student tells an administrator that a teacher has misrepresented his or her behavior in a referral or has been unfair in some way, the administrator must have a meeting with both the teacher and the student and must be the diplomat. In addition to fear of lawsuits, I remember what started the mess we're in. It was my experience that those administrators who handled discipline often made friends with students by listening to student complaints about their teachers. The day a student said to me, I want to see my dean, I realized the student had figured out what I already knew, the deans wanted to be the student's friend. If administrators want to be the friends of students, they should go back to the classroom. The ideal, of course, is for administrators, staff, and teachers to model for students their friendly working relationships. All building and central administrators and their staffs should support the teacher as the good guy. Secondly, teachers must be permitted to send disruptive students out before they incite others to join them. I have heard that at some schools, teachers are not allowed to send students out without a referral. At others, teachers can send a disruptive student to another location to chill. Neither option is usually sufficient. Consequences must be meted out before the student returns to class. Also, students sent out of class should be kept out of class until the end of, for the rest of the hour. I believe that teachers have stopped giving homework because they give students classwork instead to keep students, students busy while they handle discipline problems. Well-behaving students are being cheated out of the time needed for teachers to teach them and to get to know them and their abilities. Students don't learn material just covered in homework or classwork unless their papers are graded and then discussed. I do believe that lawsuits must be risked in order to suspend or expel students for significant periods of time if they conduct criminal behavior at school. Selling drugs, carrying weapons, any gun or knife used solely as a weapon, and fighting are not just disruptive behaviors, they are illegal. The often ignored activity relates to problems created by gang members during the school day. Stop protecting them and drug dealers. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Terry Napp.
I'd like to continue talking about unions and the terms at-will workers and right-to-work state. For those in the audience, again, that don't know much about unions and don't know much about right-to-work state, a right-to-work state is a state like North Carolina where you can work in the state of North Carolina, you can join a union if you want to, but you can't be demanded to join a union. Closed shop is what it's called. The other term is at-will workers. At-will workers are people that work in schools like at the Catholic schools. They can come in tomorrow, if I've got 20 years' experience, and I've got, in the middle of the year, they can ask me to pack my books up and go home, okay? That's not really the contract. Contract, they hire you for a year. They should have to honor that year. For example, Cindy Artis, who's the mayor's sister, was working at your school. And overnight, you know, she got told that she was going to be let go, or she wanted to leave, actually. She wanted to leave. And in the same breath, Mr. Fleegy and your superintendent over there decided that, that they were going to fine her like $8,000. I went to the trial. Did any of you go to the trial? I doubt that any people here, administrators even went to the trial. I went to the trial. I watched Cindy Artis cry her eyes out in front of the judge. And the judge ruled in her favor against Quest. I also went, and there was another gentleman, I think, from Champaign, who announced that he wanted to leave three or four weeks before, excuse me, four months before school got out at the semester because he wanted to be with his family in Champaign. He couldn't take the drive anymore. Many of you probably had him as a teacher. Anyway, the gentleman was also fined. Four or five others were fined. Some of them paid the fine, others went to court. It was just a debacle to have administrators and board members, the chairman of the board, go after teachers and, and try to fine them for leaving. The, Mr. Jenkins, your basketball coach over there, who was all-world, he was, he was one of the, he written up in paper all over the place. The school was riding his coattail as they went to the super sectional, blah, 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 blah. And he went in at the end of the season, kind of worn out from coaching, and he told them that he would not be coaching the next year. They fired him the next day on the spot. Sent him an email, said, you're done. Even though he had a contract to go March, April, and May, they didn't pay him. Goodbye, get out. Both, both he and his wife, Ms. Artis, are down in Florida now. They had to move. It's just sad. I talk to him all the time. I've known him, I've known the dad. You know, he taught at Ridgewood's for years. He was not an at-will worker. He worked under a contract. They could never have done that to somebody who works under a contract. They don't get it. They don't care about their teachers. They care about the $30 million that they want from this board. And when they get that $30 million, they won't be back. They'll have the money and they'll look at this board like, we'll see you in five years. That's what they've done this year. It's unbelievable to me as a person watching this unfold. They, I mentioned this last meeting. A person came to the podium a couple of weeks ago and said that Quest was an incubator. They give District 150 ideas. Are you kidding me? I've been at every meeting almost in the last seven or eight years. I've not heard one idea brought to this board that made District 150 better. Not one. Maybe you have. Hopefully, they'll bring it up. They talk about your alumni. You have about 140 to 150 alumni. You know how many Woodruff had? Woodruff got closed on a four to three vote because Mr. Barton wanted Quest charter school. They got closed on a four to three vote. You know how many alumni? I went to Woodruff. You know how many alumni Woodruff's got? 20,000. 20,000, not 120. They got 20,000. They got hosed, they got put on buses and haul all over the city like cattle. They lost their homeschool. They lost the ability to walk to their high school. It was sad, but that's what Mr. Barton wanted, right? And that's what he got. Again, I think it's important that when we talk about a STEM school, that people understand what a STEM school. STEM schools are science, technology, math, and engineering. Do you have calculus? Do you have calculus now? Finally get a calculus teacher? Two years ago, you didn't have calculus. You didn't have a calculus teacher because I asked. I was over there on a trip. And by the way, Mr. Fleegy and Ms. Wood told, I'll get it next time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Kim Thomas.
I'm Kim Thomas. I'm a, been teaching in this district for three cubed years, 27. I am an Illinois State Teacher of the Year. And I, I need to remember your rules you gave because that's the kind of rules, you know, for our kids as well. If I, you know, start throwing something or get upset, I'm sure this nice young lady's going to escort me out. So this is, you know, our kids need to follow this as well. It's a, it's a good lesson. I want to shout out to Ridgewood's math teachers, Michael Urbank, Sam Stalter, hope I said that right, and Shad Hickman, who teaches calculus, that prepared my daughter to be a freshman in calculus at ICC. It wasn't me. It was them. Who, you know, kids don't want their, their parents to teach them. So I just need to shout out to them for how they prepared my daughter as a freshman taking calculus. It's also been two plus five years, I believe, and you inherited this, Dr. Karat, that we have had no math textbook or workbook in grades K to four times two. I should have brought that up at the budget hearing, but our kids deserve a math textbook. Our parents deserve a textbook. I thought caps was going to be temporary. Five plus two years now? Please. Our kids need that, and so do our parents. They need to be able to see something. Smartboards, mine's a mess. I've put in a help desk ticket for that over a year ago, you know, and, and, but I have a teacher who's in worse condition across the hall from me. She's got a board, but then the thing is coming down, but no projector, just wires. So please take care of her first. But if there's any of these smartboards over in empty rooms at Woodruff or Manuel, I don't, whatever building, please get those dispersed to the teachers. Kids need those. You know, you're, I'm teaching math and I'm trying to plot a point and it goes over here, but it's supposed to be over here. That's, it's just very confusing, you know? And the words of my student, Amani, why aren't they fixing it? It's still tweaking. I'm like, I, I don't know. I'm going to, I'm going to talk to him tonight. But please look at that stuff. That's important to kids. And I know sometimes you're over here and it's, you're not thinking of those things. So please help us out on that. I also want to thank you for hiring an assistant principal, the T Squared P. That's where I teach. I know it's called Truman Therapeutic, but I call it T Squared P. Michelle Minders is fabulous. She makes it a warm morning every day for the kids at welcoming them in and it's starting out the day very well to have somebody there that can spend their time with us and our kids. Now, T Squared P is the square root of nine different programs. We are in one hallway. We have day treatment, and those kids are only supposed to have to have IEP to be in day treatment. I'm the Peoria County Safe School. I'm only supposed to get kids who are expelled, but I do get kids with IEPs. I do get, and then we have a pre-readyness, which I'm not really sure what that is. I think it's for older kids, but they're, and then we have administratively placed rooms. Now, I'm kind of confused on this because I'm getting administratively placed kids. Now, that's just another word for saying you're expelled, but maybe you weren't board-approved. And when I was at Woodruff, it was a big deal about having the administratively placed and the expelled kids on different floors. Because if you think about it, if I have an administratively placed kid, which I do, and I got two plus one kids in two plus one days of school, that's not even a full week of school. Three kids in three days? I mean, we're the, we were told last year they were supposed to have interventions for these, for students. Because, I mean, so if I get the, you can get me anybody you want. I just want to have a system in place. Because if I have a child, which I do, several that are administratively placed, and I have ones that are expelled, well, the administratively placed ones can still get expelled, but they'll have me. I mean, they're really, there's, you see what I'm saying? There's not a system in place. And for our kids, I want their setback to be a comeback. And for that to happen, we really have to have a discussion about what we are doing across this city and how I'm getting kids. It just shouldn't be just because they can walk to me. Maybe there's kids that need to come down to our program but need a bus. It's, you know, what we need to have in place, how they get there. If they're not expelling them and the board isn't approving expulsions and somebody else is, and they have an IEP, we need to get these kids what they deserve. They deserve to have their minutes met. Every kid deserves then to have some kind of, you know, opportunity if they're struggling to come to us, not just ones in walking distance. But like I said, I want their setback to be a comeback. Please do not evaluate principals on suspensions, please. Principals aren't suspending kids for chewing gum and looking at them wrong. You're probably not even getting suspended for cussing each other out. They're getting suspended if they're making it impossible for the teacher to teach, if they're cussing out teachers, just like what I would have to do to get sent out of here. If they're in fights, which that's an illegal activity you can get arrested for, please don't, don't do that. I just have one more thing. Can I go or not? Is that okay?
You're good.
Thank you. Okay. So please, support your principals on what they're doing. Now, referrals, like last year, we got a form with all the teachers' names and the referrals that we wrote. I just wanted to, you know, what is the purpose of that? Because you're going to have some teachers feel bad that they wrote a lot and some teachers then, you know, who didn't write very many, I, I mean, I just don't understand it. And then when a principal puts the person in the office that wrote the most and says, well, what's going on? Well, maybe if you did something, I wouldn't have to write so many. I don't know. I mean, you, you, we just, we just don't want that. So I just, unless I know the purpose of every teacher name and every referral they wrote doesn't make a teacher a bad teacher because they wrote referrals. They're having expectations in their classrooms. And the last thing I'm going to talk about, I promise, are the walkthroughs. Because I am here and I've experienced walkthroughs, okay? If you don't know what the form looks like, I would appreciate if every school board member would look and see what the principal is being asked to do, okay? And I'm not totally against a walkthrough. I think five times five is excessive, Dr. Karat, for a principal. That's very excessive. But it needs to have a plan. I should know what's going on. It should have, it should positively affect kids. And if it isn't, it's a waste of time. The problem I have with it is someone will come in and start talking to my student. It gets them off track. And then I'm the one left to get them back on track. That is not an easy task all the time, okay? So how about if you want to talk to kids, I thought maybe come at lunchtime and help the principal with lunch duty and ask the kid what they're doing? It's all about the learning target. If every teacher in this district erased the learning target off their board, it would be straight nose down this form. Has to be more about our Has to be more about, are kids happy? Are they loving learning? Are they learning something? I mean, some of the forms I've gotten back, especially last year, it was a lie. It said, "No learning target." Yes, it was. I took a picture of it and quick sent it in. I mean, you know, I was okay, I mean, I was a little frustrated about it, but some first-year teachers who we're trying to keep here, because we need to keep teachers here. We have the recruitment issue, it's the staying here. Can you imagine how they'd feel? I have teachers running to me now. This person came in here and they were observing the square root of 49 grade, but they put the square root of 64 grade. So then they put that my learning target was on task with my grade level. No, because the person who came in got it wrong. It wasn't the teacher. So just be very positive, you know, when, when you're in a teacher's classroom, be happy. Bring them something. Bring me something to give my kids. That would be great. You bring in something to share with the kids, but it just, it needs to be something that is effective. And when I have things written on my thing that aren't true, it gets frustrating. So I know if it's happening to me, I mean, maybe it is just happening to me, but I doubt it. And then one of the questions is, "The majority of students are engaged in active, authentic conversation that support or extend learning." I've gotten lots of nos. You want to know why? I know. I'm teaching! I mean, when I'm teaching and I want you to find out, what, a power to the power, how to write this ratio, and we're doing an activity, they might not be talking. And that's okay. But teachers need to know that's okay. They need to know that teaching is like an art. It's not a cookie cutter. Everybody's going to be doing the same thing. Every classroom, I know the needs of every single kid in my room. So do all these other Peoria finest teachers. They know too. We know. We're with them. Please trust us and trust your principals. And sometimes it won't be student-led. I am sorry, but sometimes my kids aren't ready for that. When I have a group of kids who the percentage of them passing NWA is five times two percent, I don't want, I love them, but I don't want them leading anybody right now. You got to give us time. And some of our teachers haven't even gotten the supplies that we were supposed to get at the beginning of the year also. So please, let's work together. Let's get a system, because we, all of us want all of our kids to love times love learning. And I want my kids' setback to be a comeback. Thank you.
Next up, I have Amanda Brown and the Roosevelt staff.
Good evening, President Adler, Vice President Shaw, board members, Superintendent Karat, and all other Peoria Public Schools stakeholders present and listening. I think many of you know me, but my name's Amanda Brown, and we are here tonight as a representative portion of the Roosevelt staff. We are here to thank you for supporting us in our work to implement a social-emotional learning education model at RMS this year. We want you to know how much we appreciate the support we have received from the board to enable us to embark on this endeavor. Through collaboration between the district administration and the Peoria Federation of Teachers, the staff at RMS has begun the difficult but rewarding work of embedding everything we do within a framework of a safe, joyful, and inclusive school environment. These teachers, along with many who would have loved to but were unable to join us tonight, are truly doing remarkable work. I'd like to give the microphone to a few of them to share for the rest of my time, if that's okay.
All right. So hello, my name is Donisha Freeman. I'm a fourth grade teacher at RMS. RMS has been my home for the past six years. And I want to say that Responsive Classroom has helped me fundamentally in not only collaborating with my peers, see, some you see behind me and some that couldn't make it today, but also communicating with my students. I love my students wholeheartedly. And using the structures from Responsive Classroom have helped me support them in ways that I would never even imagined. I come in every day, giving my kids a hug, a handshake, and a high five. I give them those loving touches to make sure they know that they're supported from the time they get into my room. Throughout the day, we do structures that we've learned in Responsive Classroom to not only get the blood pumping, but their brains thinking. And I want to say thank you to you today because you have allowed me to switch my train of thought to help support the better of my students.
All right, I'll talk about arts. My name is Denise Hansen. I teach fifth through eighth grade digital art and graphic design at Roosevelt. Responsive Classroom has been huge, working with that group of individuals, and also the arts program that we have at Roosevelt. Having arts twice a day for our kids, it's not a break for them. Art at some schools, not in our district, might be a break from learning. Art at Roosevelt is where our kids express their learning. We're seeing all the things they're learning throughout the day come out in their artwork, and it's really exciting. So we thank you for allowing us to have our kids in the arts as much as they are.
Well, after all that, I'm a little overwhelmed, but the truth is, is that we talked through discipline disparity and all that last year, and we said that, you know, we have to change. Instead of changing 700 kids, we needed to change 70 adults. And the teachers grasped on it, and I don't think it's necessarily that we're changed and all that. It just reminds us that we're human beings and the people that we're teaching are children. And so that extra touch, that extra talk, or that extra "How you doing?" also helps us in the classroom. And how you're sitting and getting for the last hour is not very engaging for you. I know that. So that's also what we're doing, is instead of sitting and getting, our kids are up and going. So I think that made a huge difference. So thank you. It's made a big difference at Roosevelt. We're not there yet, but it is a growth mindset, and we will. Thank you.
Next up, I have Brenda Russell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a parent at Quest Academy High School. I also want to say, I also worked over 19 years at District 150 as well. So I enjoy both districts. My husband and I, we have two children at Quest Academy High School, and we are enjoying them being at that school. We like the vision that they have to get the students prepared and get them for college and their career ready. I truly like Quest's environment with my, with our two children. We have a sophomore, they've been there. He was their freshman and sophomore, and my daughter was their freshman sophomore. Now she's a junior. She went to Sterling. Both of them went to Sterling and played basketball. They both are successful basketball players at Quest Academy High School as well. One of the things I do like about Academy, Quest Academy, is that we have a choice. Sometime in the district, your children go where your address is at. But with Quest Academy, we had, we chose to have them there. Me, myself, being a pastor, I prayed to ask God, "Where did he want to lead our children for high school?" He did lead us to Quest Academy High School. Our kids have been successful there. I am excited about their alumni, and their graduates are very successful in their choosing their career, their career path also as well. And why would we close something that's just getting off the ground for 10 years? I like the way they go at, go after their technology, and we need this to, to stay open because it is effective. God bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Montoya, and I am a parent of four girls. Two of them are charitable, and two are attending a Quest, one in middle school and one is in a high school. One of my girls, she's been on Quest for six years. I have personally seen many good things that have developed. One of many main focus of Quest is vision and mission and student college careers. One of the things that I like, that I like that they offer is interships, so students can see what they, what they want is, what they want to study is really for them. If it is not for them, they got time to change their careers. Quest also helps students discover their skills. I live in Creighton Woods subdivision, so I had a choice to choose a different school, such Marvilles or Richwoods. But I like, I like them to stay at Quest because I see the potential that Quest has. One of the benefits being at Quest is the, is a small church, I mean, I'm sorry, a school where every, everybody, everyone knows each other and is there for each other. For example, to keep our school open, students and teachers have developed a running club since May till now to run in the Wizard Darrell Marathon, which will be, which I will be running myself. They have started this to help Quest name get up there, the community. The marathon is in October. This show us that students at Quest and teachers are stick together through thick and thin. I will do anything to, to maintain our school open. Quest has only been open for 10 years. And one of my girls, she's been six years with Quest, so I've been knowing Quest for quite a few, quite a bit. So what will be, what will be the point to closing a family that has just begun with a lot to offer to students and our community? Thanks.
Good evening, board, Dr. Karat, students, administration, and staff. I stand here today to speak on something that I stand for. I stand here today to, to take a stand, which is the, which is the reason many of us are in the positions that we have today. So today, I stand in support of Quest High School and Quest Middle School. Quest isn't just a school, but a building of opportunity. It was my choice to send my son to Quest. Quest, just because I felt he would be successful in his education. So far, since attending Quest, I've seen some major changes. Yeah, I lost my book. He received a lot of support from the staff and the administration at Quest. Because of that choice, he now has a mindset to attend college and further his education. Because of that choice, he struggles, he struggles to reach his, if he struggles to reach his goal, he has a caring staff in place that will help him receive the tools that he needs to be successful. I will sincerely ask you not to take that choice away from the students, the parents, the staff, and to work, that has worked so hard to ensure that their child receives that choice regarding their future. Because of the tailored environment at Quest, students can receive the attention they may not have at any other high school. So we are truly invested in our youth. Don't take that away from, don't take that choice away from them, which could lead to endless opportunities. So I leave you with a quote by Michelle Obama that states, "Don't ever make decisions based on fear. Make decisions based on hope and possibility. Make decisions based on what you, on what you should, on what should happen, not what shouldn't." Thank you.
Ms. Angela Fuller.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time. I am a Quest parent, and I have been. This is going on our seventh year. My son is a junior at the high school, and we were fortunate enough for him to be admitted into the middle school at the fifth grade level. I've seen a lot of changes with Quest, and every year it gets better, in my opinion. One of the things that we understood, especially with the high school going into it, was every student that walked through the door the first day of their freshman year, their goal and the school's goal, which for that child, to go to college, to have the opportunity to go to college. Whether it be a four-year institution, something like ICC, or even if they wanted to just go into the military, that was fine. But they wanted to prepare their students. My son, Kyle, he has an IEP. He's on the spectrum. He is in mainstream classes. He gets wonderful supports. He is taking classes at a junior level like statistics and physics, and he has a 3.7 average. And I say, "Good, go do it." Because I don't know physics. I don't know statistics. But I know that if he does have any issues whatsoever, that he can email his teachers, even when he's doing homework on the evenings or weekends, and they respond, and they reach out, and they get to him the next day, and they work with him on a one-on-one level until he is understanding what he's supposed to do. He feels wonderful when he can understand these things. He has a lot of pride when he's accomplished something, when he's figured things out, when something clicks. And I think because of the size of the Quest Charter Academy and the technology and their vision and their mission, that this is possible. I am thankful that I had the choice because ever since he was a little boy, he said he's wanted to be an engineer. So I feel fortunate that we have a Quest Charter Academy in town, so we do have that choice. Thank you very much.
Responses to audience presentations. Dr. Karat.
Let's see, not many, just as usual, wanting to thank everybody for their perspective and comments. It's a democratic process, so that's pretty nice. I just wanted a quick comment to Mr. Knapp. The information on the board agenda today, it's, it's just routine. We have to submit a salary, an administration and salary, teacher's salary and benefits reports to Illinois State Board of Education annually. So that's what that was about. So it has nothing to do with increases or any of those things. It's just a annual, and the board has to approve it, and it goes to ISBE by October 1st. Every district has to do that. Yeah, just really regarding Ms. Thomas, hopefully she can engage Ms. Andrews. I know Ms. Andrews is really, really good about assisting. Hey, Dr. Wilson, what's that comment about math textbooks? You guys know I'll engage you, right? So, any feedback on that?
Right, it's Chirica Math. It is an online.
It's an online, yeah, the math is an online, okay. And then smartboards. I know Michelle, is Michelle here, Michelle? The last time we spoke, you were, you were awesome. You were taking, you guys were already doing that, so where were the?
We have something to Ms. Thomas already tonight, so Chad's going to call up at 2:00 in the morning. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Chad will call up.
Yeah, he's been great. It's not Chad. Chad's like rock star. Love the tech people. It's not his fault. It's just the board. Take care of the person across the hall from you first. Like, anybody who doesn't have a smartboard, should get one before I get mine fixed. But mine is really, I took, yeah, it's not good. But take care of the people who don't have one first. Don't come to me first. They need to have these. I'm going to work with Principal Andrews.
Yeah, thank you. And then I just really, it's heartwarming to get the feedback from the Roosevelt team. I, I actually visited there a couple of times, Dr. Bell and I, and we, we were very, very pleased. And I love what the principal said in trying to, we have this quote around, "Instead of trying to figure out ways to fix behaviors, spend more time figuring out ways to serve students differently." And they decided to do that. And Jeff, thank you, you were a big part of that. You and I had lots of conversations around that, and they were, they're saying, they, they mobilized and said, "We want to try to do things differently." And ended, ended up selecting the Responsive Classroom techniques, and they got training in it, and this year they're implementing it with quite a bit of success. So I love when Principal Clark said, you know, "We don't want to focus on fixing over 700 kids, but how can we look within?" And, and that's what they're doing, and they're... And, um, and that's what they're doing, and they're seeing lots of success with that. So that's, uh, that's very encouraging. There's definitely hope. We're doing some amazing work as a district that I'm very, very, very proud of. And anyone who needs help genuinely, they work through their principals, or they work through their executive director, or they even reach out to, to me, or sometimes I get, I get reminders from other people, um, which I don't mind, and, um, and so collectively we can get this thing done. And we're, we're well in a way, so I, I think that's it, Mr. Adler.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, uh, we have a few informational items, uh, on the, on the agenda for tonight. As Dr. Karat addressed, uh, there's this salary compensation report, it's our annual, uh, report there. Proposed expenditures over $2,500, any, any questions for Mr. Willis on, on that list? Uh, Dr. Karat, uh, report a request under the Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, President Adler, since our last board meeting on September 9th, we received one new request, also in the pending category, pending status, there was also one request noted on October 9th. Since then, that request is still open. And then, under request summary, since January of this year, 2019, we have received six requests for this calendar year at a cost of $1,700. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Shaw, would you please read the consent agenda for this evening?
Thank you, President Adler. Consent agenda for September 23rd consists of the following items. Item number one, gifts to the school district. Tonight, $152,175, year-to-date, $155,583. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, human resources report. Item number five, board policy 7:180, prevention of bullying. Item number six, board policy 7:190, student behavior formerly known as student discipline. Item number seven, license agreement with Family Core Respite Program. Item number eight, PHS track and field entrance and parking lot improvements, and that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any items that, uh, board members would like polled for a separate vote? Yep, I have six. Okay. Any other items? Can I get a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item six?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can we send a really big thank you card to Oak Grove School District? $150,000 valued donation of books is much appreciated. Wow. Um, any, any discussion on the items with the exception of item six? Okay, seeing none? Would you please call the roll?
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Paskin.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion and a second to adopt item six?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Ross?
Uh, I want to move to table.
Okay. We do move to table to our next board meeting?
To the next board meeting.
Very good. All right, there's a motion, can I have a second?
So moved.
Yeah, you need a second.
Oh, second.
Okay. All right, everybody's clear, we're moving to table. Uh, consideration of item six till our next board meeting. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walton.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Paskin. Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye. All right, item nine is the budget resolution. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the following resolution, whereas the Board of Education of the City of Peoria, School District 150, County of Peoria, State of Illinois caused to be prepared a tentative budget, and the Secretary of the Board has made the same conveniently available to the public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon, and whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget, uh, this evening, 23rd day of September 2019, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto required by law, and all other legal requirements have been compiled with. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows, that the budget containing an estimate of amounts available on each fund separately and expenditures from each be and the same as hereby adopted as the budget of the school district for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the budget resolution? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walton.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Paskin. Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye. Uh, Mr. Shaw, would you please read the?
Yes, I move that the expulsion with expulsion held and the bans listed on the report dated September 23rd, 2019 be approved as presented.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walton.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Paskin. Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye. Thank you. Are there any presentations or suggestions by board members tonight? Seeing none? Any reports from board committees?
The Building Committee will meet on October 17th at 3, at 2 PM, 2 PM, thank you. Yeah, I forgot what committee.
Nice. All right. Anything else for the good of the public? Seeing none? Oh, Mr. Hernandez. My apologies. So, Mr. Hernandez is our student board member, uh, for this evening. You're at which high school?
Peoria High School.
Peoria High School. Well, thank you for being here tonight. Do you have anything, any comments on our meeting, or anything you would like to suggest? I'm, I am glad that we got you out here a lot earlier than our last student.
He does have a paper to write, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming, and we are adjourned.